With the board first. Anyone have anything?
Yeah, thank you.
Just want to shout out to the Windmill Weekend Committee. It was an awesome event this this weekend and yeah, couldn't have been better weather.
I know.
You know, all week the weather was looking kind of iffy and we had a nice surprise yesterday, so I hope everybody had a good time. Uh, any public information that's not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any. We'll go into our tax classification hearing with Colleen Mercurio, our principal assessor.
Good, okay. Um, good evening, good evening, select board members. Most of you I've had the pleasure of of working with in the past, but for those whom I have not, allow me to introduce myself. My name is Colleen Mercurio, um, principal assessor here since March of two thousand and twenty-two. As you're probably aware, um, this tax classification that I'll be presenting tonight is an annual Department of Revenue requirement of an assessor and their board. So thank you for having me here tonight and also I want to thank Davis Hobbs, Chair of the Board of Assessors and Alex Peterson behind me here, the Assistant Assessor, Field Appraiser, for taking the time to join us here in the audience to su- support me tonight. So we can move to the first slide. Thank you. So like I said, tonight I'll be presenting to you the different options of how our tax levy could be spread among the five classes of of property taxpayers in Eastham. The Select Board must vote to adopt a residential factor, which will use to determine if the levy will be spread evenly among the classes, or if we're going to shift the burden to be heavier on some and to leave it on others. We also have several exemption options that must be considered annually, the most contentious of which being the residential tax exemption, of course, which the Select Board has already voted not to adopt for fiscal twenty-five when we did our annual revisiting of the topic in in January of this year. And we'll again revisit it next January as it's been highlighted that it would take a great deal of time and effort in order to implement that, so we we have to do it kind of mid-year. Next slide. So first up here, we have our LA four report. So this kind of breaks down the values by class. So we we have the total residential value. It's a little bit, it's a little bit small, but you'll, you can see that we have it broken down in the columns by residential value, open space, commercial, industrial and personal property. And we also have, it's just kind of a a bird's eye view, parcel counts, total values. And these values are what I've already submitted to the Department of Revenue for approval. They were approved on August twenty-ninth and they are a result of the statistical analysis that uh, of all the sales that occurred during calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. So they represent what each property's value was as of the January first tax date, which is the tax date for the fiscal twenty-five billing we're about to go into. So this next slide here shows what the percentage of the total value each class bears. So you'll see that the residential is our predominant class that consists of single-family homes, vacant land condos, multi-houses. And then we have some commercial and industrial sprinkled throughout the town, but it's not a really heavy commercial industrial town. And then personal property is actually comprised of both the second home personal property tax and the businesses that are in the town. So the the things that are involved in them running their business are taxed. Here, what I've displayed are the total values that were the total values from last year compared to the values this year. So you'll see on the top row here, the top line that the residential class overall is increasing four point four seven percent this year. So that's a a great relief after last year's thirteen point two percent, I think it was, and the prior year before that was the twenty twenty-four percent. So this is nice to see. I mean, it's still, it's still something. It's still an increase, but it's not what we've seen in the past. So that is again for all residential property types, single families, condos, the likes. And then within the single family, I mean, within the residential class, the single family homes are our predominant class code. So we have, you know, the multifamilies, the two families. So the single-family homes are actually only going to see an average increase of about three percent. So a little bit less than the average of all the residential class. And then there's really not much um, change in the the other classes. Personal property is made up mainly of the utility companies and cell towers and whatnot. So that's just what types of property was present on January first. So not much change there. Okay. There, thank you. So here we have single-family home values over the past five years. So you'll see that you know, during the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, we had hundred thousand dollar jumps. And we're only really seeing about twenty thousand, thirty thousand this year. So not to diminish that. I acknowledge that any increase can be a burden, but um, we're simply not in a downward trend entirely in our market. So this is what we have this year. That's a little bit of a flattening of the curve, you could, you could say, which means that the sale prices in general were closer to our assessed values at that time. So not a lot of adjustments were needed. Um, the Department of Revenue requires that we assess that a hundred percent fair market value. I'm sure you're aware. So kind of an oversimplified example would be say, an average Cape home built in nineteen eighty with no updates and some deferred maintenance. If we had a lot of sales of similar similar properties that were selling for hundred thousand over their assessed value, we'd have to analyze that and and it would indicate that we are undervaluing that type of property and that all have to be brought up to those sale prices. So that's the common question that we're asked. I haven't done anything. Why is my value going up? And that's kind of a cut and dry simplified example of of how that would happen. So the market really is what is determining our values. So I'm sure you're you're aware, in order to calculate the tax rate, first you have to know the levy that must be raised. And then you divide that by the total value and multiply it by a thousand and get our our tax rate. So here's a kind of a quick breakdown of how we're coming to that tax levy. So we have the prior year levy limit. And then we add on the two and a half percent. And then you can add on overrides and new growth and you get your your maximum levy. And then you add on debt exclusions and Cape Cod Commission water sewer projects to get your maximum allowable levy. And then our amount raised could be up to that, but it's, you know, slightly less in this instance. So that's the number that we're going to use to to calculate the tax rate there. And then this next slide, it just kind of zooms in on that growth component that I like to take a look at each year. New growth, if you're not aware, is defined as anything being added to the tax roll for the first time. So something like a a deck or a shed or something either newly discovered or newly at recently added. So over the past few years, we've been able to to really double the growth that's been captured. Um, both as a result, obviously, I think of the COVID construction era boom with just people doing a lot of renovations and constructions. But also our our office's field appraisal methodology where we're paying extreme attention to detail and accuracy coupled with um, our field appraiser actually has collaborated with the planning department and she really takes a great deal of of she inspects all the permits that are coming in and it just allows for for nothing to go unnoticed. So we're really keeping a good eye on all of that. So it's it's allowed us to have a good deal of growth for the past few years and new growth, as you know, it becomes part of the the levy limit base in the following year. So it's helpful for both the current year we're in and and going forward. So this brings us to the tax rate. Based on the levy limit we just calculated of thirty-eight million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. And the total residential value, the DOR approved of five billion, five million, five hundred and nine thousand, seventy. We get a tax rate of seven dollars and seventy-one cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. This slide here shows the the fluctuation over of the tax rate over the, I guess this is what twenty-something years here. Generally speaking, when the tax rate goes, when the values go down, the tax rate goes up and vice versa. A lot more goes into it than that, as you were just shown on the uh, the levy calculation page, and it depends on what other projects are going on in town, but overall, you can just kind of see the course of the course of the rate over time. So up slightly from last year. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions during during the presentation too. Thank you.
Um, could I just?
Yeah.
Can you just touch on maybe twenty-three, uh, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, what what could cause that kind of?
Last slide?
Yeah, the last slide, I'm sorry.
So when it dipped down that low, that's because that was coupled with that twenty-four percent increase in values, thirteen percent increase in values. People during that time were were buying properties that were assessed at three hundred thousand dollars for eight hundred thousand dollars. So everything, you know, we brought it up considerably and then even after bringing it up so dramatically, again, things were selling for more than what we had them at, so it had to raise again. So we we did see that rapid decline at that time.
And also just to add that also is um, a reflection of the tax levy being raised. So obviously, as Colleen pointed out, the values are going up substantially in those years. But the levy that needs to be raised isn't going up as fast.
Right.
So we've had moderate, relatively moderate amount of tax levy increases in total. So when if you have your values going up much fa- faster than the levy that needs to be raised, the rate will drop.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. So in this slide, we're just kind of taking a look at what a tax rate of seven dollars and seventy-one cents per thousand looks like on our median and average values. So I have last year's at the top. You'll see that the the average was eight hundred nine thousand, eight forty-two with the median at just over seven hundred thousand with a tax rate of just about seven dollars, seven dollars and one cent per thousand. The burden for the average single family was five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and the median slightly lower than that at four thousand, nine forty-one. So now with this projected rate of seven seventy-one, it brings the, well, the average single-family value went up to about thirty thousand to eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five thirty-four with median at seven twenty-eight-six. So with that tax rate, that brings the average tax bill to six thousand, four seventy-three and the median to five thousand, six seventeen. I think the average increase there or median increase, six hundred and seventy-six dollars per per bill there. So now that we kind of have an idea of what values look like, with the proposed rate, we can take a look at the different options that must be voted on tonight. So state law permits the town to adopt a residential factor of less than one, which would have the effect of increasing the the commercial and the CIP essentially, commercial, industrial, personal property and decrease the residential tax rate. So as you can kind of see on here, it's a little bit small, but the the commercial, industrial, personal property is currently responsible as it stands at a residential factor of one with nothing being shifted. It it comprises two point nine nine eight percent of that levy that they'd be responsible for. So we'd be allowed to increase it to a hundred and fifty percent, making them responsible for four point four nine seven percent of the share instead. And this would have the effect of increasing the commercial, industrial, personal property rate to eleven point six percent and decreasing the residential rate only to seven sixty-one. So it's it's a quite a cost to the commercial, industrial, personal property with really not much benefit to the residential class. And with our already small CIP class in Eastham, the the Board of Assessors feels that any shift would kind of push away business and recommends that we maintain a residential factor of one.
It's another thing I'd just add to that is that's commonly um, referred to as a single tax rate. So you have the same seven dollar and seventy-one cent tax rate for all property in town. Whereas if you have something other than a factor of one, you have a split tax rate and your commercial properties are paying a higher amount than the residential rates.
Um, do we have examples of towns in on the Cape that do the split?
I don't think any towns on the Cape.
And no one on the Cape does that. It's mostly common in areas where you can have a probably a minimum of fifteen, if not twenty percent commercial base, where there's a substantial ability to absorb it. And they probably have that commercial base because they're profitable and valuable business and organizations or entities in there that can absorb it as well. The smallest town that I can think of uh, on the south coast is part of the town of Avon. And that's, and so um, that's a very small town, just a few thousand people. But they have an uh, industrial park right off Route twenty-four. So you have some some peculiar circumstance like that, perhaps you would have it even at a small town.
They have big, they have Costco and IKEA.
Exactly, Jordans furniture.
Thank you.
You can move on to the next slide there. Thank you. So as I touched upon earlier, the residential tax exemption in January, we had our annual meeting to discuss the adoption and the vote was taken at that time to not do so for fiscal twenty-five. And so the Board of Assessors maintains that recommendation and we would like to maybe meet in advance of that January meeting to just discuss other potential options that might be out there that could be effective and coupled with, you know, the things we're already doing to to help. As for the open space discount, Eastham does not currently have open space. It's something that would have to be, I think, worked on with the town planner, built into the comprehensive plan. It has to be presented to the state and accepted. And there are many steps to protecting land in that manner. And the the Board of Assessors recommends kind of easier pathways for achieving open space such as conservation restrictions, um, which would provide, it it preserves the land, but it also provides a slight tax decrease to the taxpayer. So that's kind of the route that they would recommend going if we want to really bring on an open space benefit in town. So they recommend no open space discount be adopted until such a time that we might have open spaces to exempt. The small commercial exemption. An exemption of up to ten percent may be granted to a qualifying commercial property. So it has to meet these, this criteria here, having a valuation of less than a million dollars and it has to have ten or fewer employees. And eh, just to to point out here, any savings from this exemption, they're only as available to the commercial properties and the the levy would be shifted within the commercial industrial class. So you're taking, again, you might be putting a burden on a a business that is not qualified if they have eleven employees, but they still are going to be hit and it would be a negative impact for them. And additionally, the exemption is given to the property owner, which is not always the business owner. So it, the Board of Assessors feels that it it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that because it could negatively impact our businesses in town that already might be struggling. So they recommend they voted unanimously to not adopt the small commercial exemption.
Colleen, is there any distinction within that for seasonal versus year-round businesses? Or do they not?
No, not written into the the law, no. Um, and I, it's it's pretty basic. It's not, it doesn't seem to be customizable by the town. It's just kind of, this is what the state offers.
Okay.
So as a a final statement, to maintain the historic pattern of taxation in Eastham, based on the information presented this evening, the Board of Assessors voted unanimously to recommend that the residential factor remain at one, that there be no residential exemption granted for fiscal twenty-five. There be no small commercial exemption granted and no open space discount adopted for fiscal twenty-five. Do you have any questions that I can answer? If I don't get this.
Jamie? I thank you very much for the presentation and for coming back here on a regular basis to talk about all this with us. It's, it's really helpful. Um. Do you know, has there been an increase in the break even number? So I believe that probably.
I didn't examine that, the valuation with the numbers. We did take a look at just the the breakdown of residents to non-residents and that has ma- maintained the same status as it was at.
Okay.
I didn't kind of redo all the numbers, but I can, I can put that together. I just have it in spreadsheet so I could kind of with the values where they are now.
Yeah.
If we get together before January, we can.
Yeah, it would be nice to have that. Yep, great for that meeting, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, my guess is that would have gone up.
Yeah, slightly. I mean, if the thirty thousand increase roughly in the average fam- single-family home, you're probably going to see it go just about that amount too.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions for the board? Bob?
Not yet.
Okay, we're getting close to a vote, so just checking. Jamie?
I I didn't know if we wanted to, that we had three emails that came in today. I don't know if those, I don't think they had been added to the packet or like sent out to us, but it is addressing the RTE. Do you want me to just?
I think I got, I received two of them. I didn't, I didn't have three. I, sure.
So um, just to, so they're on record for the meeting. Um, it was three separate emails, each in favor of the adoption of the RTE. Um, just to briefly summarize, it was from three year-round residents, all young people with families. One of them has a two-year-old daughter. Um, I think one of them has um, infants, um, you know, advocating for the adoption of the residential tax exemption. Um, discussing that the rest of the outer Cape towns, Province Central, Welfley have already instituted them in their towns for years with much success, um, viewing a percentage of part-time residents. Um, the percentage of part-time residents has been steadily steadily increasing to the point that we in Eastham should be preparing to put one in place. Um, you know, they go on to kind of explain their reasoning for sending their emails, but I just want to make sure that those three emails were noted by the board.
Um, would you mind reaching back out to them to, you know, let them know that we do have that big discussion every January?
Yeah. I wonder, yeah.
And then they could see, you know, some of the numbers that would be either beneficial or harmful to them depending on where their evaluations lie.
That would be great. I wonder, would we be able to put together like? Um, I'm trying to think about the best way to notify. I guess I'll just have to stay on top of it to notify them one in January. It's going to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep an eye on the agendas. We could start a list too. Yeah.
Okay, maybe when I respond.
CC to Kayla?
These emails? Uh.
Through the portal.
We're sending them all to Kayla.
Okay.
Start a list.
Okay, great. I'll um, I'll mention what I'll do is when I reply to each of them, I will CC Kayla and you, Jackie, and then mention that we will start a list.
And in the meantime, there might be some other programs coming into play that might be able to help them without that happening.
And by CCing, maybe I can help link them up with that. Okay, we'll start a list and try to. Okay. It's just, I think that their frustration is that maybe some of them, so many of those features are income qualifying, you know, and so that's the struggle. I think that they're, they're kind of stuck in between as they make a little too much for any of the benefits in their age group, you know, because most working-class people don't have any benefits from the state if they make, you know, if they work. So it's, it's a little frustrating. Yeah. Okay, I will do that.
Bob, do you have anything?
Um, just looking at this, glanced at it before the meeting, but looking at these numbers with an explanation for the first time. So if I ask a stupid question, bear with me. Please, um, so you know, you look at this and you see that the the tax rate is going up about ten percent. And the increase in the value of the properties is going up less than four percent. So the difference in this has to be what we're adding on as these maximum allowable levies, correct?
Yeah, all the different projects that are happening in the town, the the override, the debt exclusion.
These are all, these are all projects that, except for the uh, water and sewer, which we're saving up for, I presume. These are all projects that have been money that's already been spent.
Authorized.
Authorized, right, like the high school renovation.
Bob, I guess what, and just jump in here, if I, if you would look at the um, slide that has the calculation of the allowable levy.
That's um.
This one here. Um. So some of the key drivers in that, so just like we were talking about, why did the tax rate go down? Because the values of the property is going up faster than the growth of the levy in those years. The opposite's also true, right? So now that we're seeing a slow in the growth of values, but still in a uh, a modest growth in the levy. And if you were to look at here, I'd point out a couple of key things. Um, first one being the override of a million, three twenty, uh, which is due to the schools and new police officers. That's not a normal factor that you have necessarily every year. And also uh, debt exclusions. This number has been automatically gets added on to the levy each year depending on the amount of debt related, in this case, to the water and the wastewater project. We have new debt um, for both of those projects that hit for the first time this year. And um, I don't have the exact date in my head at this moment, but you know, this is going to continue to grow, grow for a couple of years at least and to it, till it reaches its peak, assuming we don't take any action on wastewater.
Got you.
Um, and then it'll start dropping down. So all things being equal, when you start seeing this dropping down, the levy growth will start to subs- subside a little bit.
That makes sense. I mean, uh, my math was right, but it's the, it's the explanation of the levy items that is really might be the the gray area for a lot of people.
It certainly is, yeah.
Jerry, I know you're just joining us, but you had the packet earlier. Any questions on the?
No, no, it's, I don't. Thank you. Pretty, pretty well explained. Thank you.
All right, so no more questions? All right, we can go ahead and vote. We.
Aye. Well, we need a motion.
We need the motion. Yeah, the motion is.
Accepting the report.
Uh, here's the motion. I think she, she printed, no, I think we can do them all in one. I'll, I'll go ahead and do it. I move to use a residential factor of one and not to grant an open space discount, open space discount, not to grant a residential exemption and not to grant a small business exemption.
I would like to pull the um, tax exemption as a separate vote.
The residential exemption? Okay. So I'll move to use a residential factor of one, not to grant an open space discount and not to grant a small business exemption.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, now I'll move to I'm going to move to not grant an open spa- or a residential tax exemption.
I'll, I'll. I'll second that.
All right, discussion.
So, I mean, I'm, I guess I am forever to be an advocate for this, especially, you know, I can't in good conscience, look at the numbers every year and look at the situation in our community and vote no for the residential tax exemption. I understand. But um.
Speak your mind, Jamie. And you voted against it in January? I completely understand.
Yeah, so um, you know, I think it's, I'm just going to pull some of the stuff that was said in the presentation that the market is what's determining our values right now. And I think that's a powerful statement for um, the burden that we're seeing on young families in our community and why they're disappearing. Um, single-family home values have almost doubled since two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and it's not just here. You know, it is a lot of resort communities, I think, are struggling with the situation and looking for the tools to give their residents so that they can afford to stay in their homes um, and continue to work in their communities. Um, and, you know, and not have to be relocated because of this situation that we're seeing. Um, new growth has more than doubled. Um, you know, these are just things I'm just repeating from the presentation. So these are the reasons that I I think it's important that the board take a strong look at this. Um, because w- without this, if it does not pass, then it, we need to continue to develop and evolve with the tools that we use for our community and direct directly address these, this population that's missing attention. You know, they don't.
and directly address these, this population that's missing attention. You know, they don't have as many services. We don't have as many opportunities from the state to provide anything to these individuals that are struggling to continue to work in our communities. They're struggling to continue to teach, to work on our fire departments and police departments, paint, do your landscaping, all of these things, like these are the people that are gonna disappear. And they won't be there. And it'll be even harder for them to come back. So that's all.
Well said, well said. And I know we have the new community fund that you'll be working on, you and, I believe Bob will be working on the, you know, parameters for that program. So hopefully that'll be something we can definitely use to help help those people in the middle that don't qualify for certain things and.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amy.
All right, Jerry?
Yeah, I Jamie, you're right. You, you're correct. All those factors are there and, you know, as I said before, when I purchased my, my home in Eastham, someone was living there and so there was a family that had to move and it was not, I didn't move in as a, as a full-time resident. But at the same time, this residential ta- tax exemption would help me. And I don't need it. And I think that it was, it's, it's just better to have something that's, that's more targeted. We have the community fund and hopefully the citizens of Eastham will will help fund that and, and we can work it. And it's also from my time in college and all the time I worked in the government and so forth, you try and be fair and my house next to a neighbor who is a part-time resident and not a full-time resident is exactly the same homes and having them pay more taxes than I do somehow doesn't doesn't seem like government is treating people equally. And that's what we're supposed to try and do. That doesn't mean we're, we succeed, but we're supposed to try and do that. So I really want to try and push the community fu- fund and I wanna, and Colleen's looking at other programs that we have to try and help people through taxes to in- in- increase rentals for for full-time rentals and so forth to try and increase the house the housing we have here. And I think the, the point I'd like to say is let's make a huge effort on that community fund. Let's see if we can try and make some difference to help those who really need it to stay here in Eastham, stay and work for our police or fire or teachers, et cetera. That, that's why I'm there and it's just it's a hard question, Jamie. It's one that I wish I had a magic wand. I don't have one, but that's where I'm at.
Jamie?
No, I definitely agree, you know, that I think the community fund is definitely going to be, have the potential to be extremely helpful. And, you know, I am just gonna have to do it. I just have to remind folks, you know, your neighbor who is a part-time resident, I have a lovely neighbor who's a part-time resident. I love them. They're awesome neighbors. But they do already have a home. And it's not the one that's next to me. That, that's the difference.
All right, any more discussion on this? Okay, this is to not put in a residential tax or not have a residential tax.
Tax exemption, right. And we, we've had a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion second. All right, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Three to one. All right, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll definitely get with you when November, December, before our big, big mucky-muck meeting. Yes. Our pre, pre. Exactly.
Thank you.
Amy, can I just mention one thing?
Sure.
To follow along, and I don't want to steal any thunder from Jackie, and I know we're, think it's on the agenda, not over. But we do hear about exemptions all the time through the assessing department. And they do a good job on considering those and putting those into place. And there might even be some ability to increase them this upcoming year, so we're gonna consider that. But there's also a brand-new one.
Right.
That just passed in March of twenty-four, the, I think I have the name right, the Affordable Housing Tax Exemption. And the big difference with that, it is almost like a community fund model, so I'm, you know, maybe they got the idea from Eastham. But instead of being very prescriptive, like most of the exemptions, elderly, disabled and things like that, veteran exemptions, this one is left to the the question I have, which I'm trying to work through now to give you guys a, a good update on it, is how much discretion do you have to create the exemption program? Because instead of being prescriptive, it allows you to set some parameters yourselves. So that tool that's now available to us that we could potentially consider at the next town meeting in conjunction with the community fund, might be a great ability for us to make some differences in some of these things.
That's great. And hopefully you can work on it at the same time, the parameters.
Yeah.
Yes.
Community fund with, yeah, that's great. Thank you, Rich.
I know.
Great. Thank you, Colleen.
When you get rabbit out of our hat, I'll just want to get two hundred.
All right, next we have appointments, Thomas McNamara from the Part-Time Resident Association.
That would be helpful. That's what we gotta do is talk to them. Yeah, I agree.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
For those who don't know me, I'm Tom McNamara, the president of the Eastham Part-Time Residents Taxpayer Association.
Got your swag on tonight.
Actually, I do, yeah, yeah. And I did not know what the agenda items were here when we originally scheduled this. But obviously timing is everything. As you know, you've heard, has been around for the last fifty-one years in town and looking to be active participants in, in the, in the community here. And as part of our charter, every year we make donations to organizations or funds in the community that help to improve the quality of life for the citizens, all, all citizens of, of the community. With that, I'm kind of following up also on July membership meeting that Amy and Jackie, I know you both attended. And the, the organization this year decided to make a donation to the community fund. We look at the community fund as some of the same words that have already been said tonight. I'm not going to repeat, but a very valuable tool to provide targeted assistance to those that need it most in the community. I know this has not been a, an easy client for those of you in the town from the select board, Jackie, Rich and others to make this happen with state approval. So I'd like to offer our congratulations to you folks and, and all the effort that went in, because we really do see this as a positive step going forward. So with that, I'd like to present this donation for two thousand dollars, which I hope is something that will start other donations from similar organizations and individuals within the community to help us make Eastham affordable for everyone. So with that, thank you, and I'd like to present this check to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Tom. I'll take the check. There we go. Speaking of community fund.
Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you. Do we have to vote to accept that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand dollar donation from the Eastham Part-Time Resident Taxpayer Association to, directed to the community fund.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next we have Susan Abbott from the Nauset Lighthouse.
Everybody.
Welcome.
So for those who don't know me, I'm Susan Abbott. I'm president of the Nauset Life Preservation Society. And so.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It looks, sounds like our audio is off, maybe I just to.
Just move the microphone closer.
Okay, there we go.
Is that, is that better?
Probably. Someone from.
Someone watching on TV sent me a message, so.
Make sure the green light's on there. Is there a little green light?
No.
On the base of the microphone?
No.
No? Mary's got it.
Mary's got it.
Oh, it's a different kind of microphone? Oh, sorry.
Maybe she can just sit.
There we go. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So we just wanted to come tonight and talk to you a little bit about something, new things that are happening at Nauset Lighthouse and having to do with the historic keeper's house. So before I do my little presentation, I just wanted to give two-minute history about the Nauset Lighthouse Keeper's House. So back in eighteen seventy-three, we had the Three Sisters Lighthouses. And in eighteen seventy-three, they, their Fresnel lenses were upgraded to a fourth-order lens from a six-order lens, so bigger, more expensive lenses, and that necessitated hiring an assistant lighthouse keeper. So now we've got a keeper, an assistant keeper, one keeper's house. They moved both families into the same house and reportedly was not satisfactory. So they decided to build a new lighthouse keeper's house in eighteen seventy-five. And right around this time, there's a lot of lighthouses being built in the United States. And the Lighthouse Society decides they're going to have kind of a standardized format for light lighthouse keeper's houses. And as it turns out, our keeper's house was the first one of its kind. So there's about twenty-two of these houses that were built all over New England and New York of exactly the same style. About thirteen of them still exist. And we believe that ours is the first. So it was built in, in eighteen seventy-five. It was moved in nineteen twenty-three when our current lighthouse came here from Chatham. And of course, it was moved again in nineteen ninety-eight after we moved our lighthouse in nineteen ninety-six. So over the years, succession of lighthouse keepers lived in this house. And the nineteen fifties, the light was automated. Electricity didn't come to Northeastham until about nineteen fifty. So I know it's hard to imagine, but it was pretty remote at the time. So when, when they electrified the light, then they no longer needed the lighthouse keepers, sold the house to a private owner, and it's been in private hands now since the nineteen fifties. So moving up to nineteen ninety-six, we moved the lighthouse because of erosion. Mary Dobinspek was the owner of the keeper's house. She didn't have any place to put the house due to erosion and really wanted to keep the whole light station together. Now, our light station consists of the tower, the house, and that little brick oil house. So Mary wanted to keep everything together. She didn't want to take that house and move it across town. And her solution was to donate the keeper's house to the National Park Service in exchange for twenty-five-year tenancy. So that tenancy was up in two thousand twenty-four. The Dobinspeks had to sadly leave their home. And the Park Service agreed to let our group take care of the keeper's house. So kind of in recognition of, of the work that we've done with the lighthouse ever since nineteen ninety-three. And so, so this is a, a whole new thing for us. So now we've got this, this historic keeper's house. It's it's a wonderful thing. It's beautiful, but it is also a little bit of a money pit, as it turns out. So we've got some, some pictures here of the house. So there's the exterior. You can see some details. See, the kitchen is outdated. There's a funky bedroom upstairs that they've turned into a bathroom. So that was kind of a third bedroom in the house, and now it's, it's this funny little bathroom. It's, it's just a very cool house and so because it's a house, we're paying probably about twenty thousand dollars a year to maintain the house. And so that means that we need to raise some money. So you can see we've got some deferred maintenance. We had professional inspection done a couple of months ago and identified probably about a hundred thousand dollars worth of work that's gonna need to be done on the house sooner than later. So it needs a new roof, it needs new siding, it needs some electrical updates. It needs quite a few things. And so that, of course, all falls to our organization, because even though the house is owned by the National Park Service, it's, it's maintained by us. So this is something that the Park Service does. They partner with organizations to do things that the park cannot afford to do themselves. So we do that with the lighthouse tower, and now we're going to be doing it with the keeper's house. So so we're really excited. I mean, it sounds, it's a lot of work and it's been a lot of work, but we're really excited that we're able to to take on this new project and we have some really exciting plans for it. So this year, we've been renting the house out to vacationers because that's how we can make the money that we need to not only pay our expenses but to, to do some of this deferred maintenance and eventually the whole thing is gonna have to be moved again. So our plan is that, that we will rent it out seasonally to vacationers. But we also have some really exciting plans that we'd like to have school groups come in, community groups, do some fundraisers and do some artist residencies, such as they do with some of the modern houses in Truro and Wellfleet. So we have very ambitious plans and really what we're here for tonight is to kind of let everybody in town know what we're up to. We're here, we're doing this exciting project. We would love to invite all of you to come by and tour the house and, and see just how cool it is. So, so if we can make some kind of a schedule when you guys can come and
I'd love that.
And, and see it. So we'll, we'll work that out. But really, we just, you know, we want to work with you guys. It is a, a park service thing. We are a partner with the park, but we also are in a Eastham. And, you know, we've, we've done all the things that we need to do with the town as far as having the house inspected, getting our rental certificate, and so we, we just really want to work with you guys and you know, down the road, maybe we'll do some CPA kinds of things, because we would like to, you know, to keep up this historic house, because I think it's really an asset to the town.
That's great. Susan, did you say that it was rented out this past summer?
We have rented it. We've had about, so far about five people have rented it from four to seven days. We've got some more rentals coming up in September and October.
Okay, great. And that's without doing any, the updates, yeah?
Right. Right. So we've had.
Yeah, there's still charm to that.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely.
So there's no air conditioning, so that's been a challenge.
There's some, yeah. Jamie?
Oh, no, I wasn't reading.
That's right.
And this is great, though. This was, I'd love to do a tour, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I put that down. We can get Kayla on a, get a schedule and
Yeah.
find out what works for everyone. Thank you so much.
All right.
It's exciting. So are you going to have a sort of a public fundraising?
Yeah, at some point. I mean, right now, we're just trying to get through the season. It's been a lot. But yeah, we'll be having some, some events. Maybe something around Christmas time. We might do something around the time of our phone tour. So just, you know, a lot, lots to think about.
Super.
This, this all kind of came up for us just this spring. And we weren't even able to promote the rentals until mid-June. So, so it's, it's been kind of a whirlwind for us.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Right. DPW surplus. So a bunch of items, a lot of cars that need to be towed, apparently. I was like, must be towed, must be done, some snowplows.
I don't want to use the word hoarders, but.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not gonna list everything, but it'll be posted once, once we approve these items for surplus. There'll be a list posted for, and it's coming up quickly. I saw the September, starts September eleventh and closes on September twenty-fifth.
Right. If we approve. So would you like a motion for all of the, one?
Yes.
We, I don't think we have.
Unless anyone wants to pull something out.
I move that we declare surplus the items in the packet from the, from the, given to us by the Department of Public Works.
Second.
Right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. All right, look at that.
We can.
Town manager's report.
Okay, I have one item of concern, a big item. Other than that, it's, it's a pretty straightforward report, but we have been notified by the DEP that testing has identified PFAS in nine of our monitoring wells around the Eastham landfill. This is not a crisis that anyone needs to be worried about, because the solution to this is the water system and we have the solution, right? So there are four homes not connected to our public water supply, so because we own the land that the PFAS has been determined, we need to do a sample test for all of those homes and facilitate their connection to our public water system if.
They're not already connected.
If they're, they're not already.
There's four.
There's four that are not. Yeah. So basically, they're, they're going to do the, or they're gonna send out a letter to the four homes saying, you know, we need to test your water and and these are all homes that had the opportunity to get a free connection when we did the mandatory. They're in the mandatory service area.
Still offered, or is that time, that was a while ago?
That was a while ago. So no, we don't have an active contract that could do that right now, so we have to think about that, should, should there be a hit, but PFAS, like one-four dioxane, is in a lot of products. And just like one-four dioxane, now we have to get rid of it from those products, and it does travel quickly, not attached, just like one-four. So it's a very similar substance in that way. But I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have these monitoring sentinel wells around all of our public water supply wells around the landfill area so that we can get early detection if something has happened. And this is predictable.
Ones around the public water supply wells are all negative at this point.
Perfect right now, yeah. Okay, so that's that. And we are advertising, we are in the process of final interviews for the deputy fire chief that will happen this tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday, this week. And hopefully we'll make that offer by the end of this week, early next. We also have two patrol officer positions. Our shellfish constable is being advertised. And we really need heavy motor equipment and skilled laborer positions with the DPW. We are down at least two positions there, so. Anyone is interested in public service, working for the DPW or the transfer station, please apply.
We had a great ceremony this morning.
Yes, we did.
White D R, brand new fire chief, Lisa Albino, was awesome. There were
Great ceremony.
Must have been a few hundred people.
Yeah, it was. It was mobbed. And for me, the surprising thing was that the individual that Lisa had speak for was a deputy fire chief of Meriden, Connecticut, which is where I was born and raised. So it was really kind of a small world.
Yes. It's great. Now, well, well-deserved promotion for Lisa.
Yes, it was.
She was a bit overwhelmed, but I think pretty darn happy.
Great.
She did great.
Yep.
All right. Next, new and upcoming agenda items. We had talked, Rich, about doing that kind of little spreadsheet. I know you were working on that before. But we'd really like to get something like that back in the packet to
Yep.
You know, have all our projects. Yeah, he's aware of it.
Yeah.
You know, so we can see it and what what's coming up. And that's what I think, like Colleen's discussion before our January. Yep, to talk about.
And we'll also have our budget schedule coming up.
Exactly. I know. That's what you were most recently working on was the budget schedule, so. Is there anything else anyone wanted to bring up for?
Like, that's great.
Bob, did you have any?
Also.
Okay. All right, next is minutes. We have August fifth and August nineteenth. Someone like to make a motion?
I move we accept the minutes for August fifth and August nineteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Four to zero. Any other business?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Great.